Mr. Severson's absent. Mr. Gray?
Present.
Mr. Moss? Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here. Okay, the next item is report from the Planning Director. EJ, what do you have for us today? Okay. Am I supposed to turn you off from here, the podium mic?
No. That'll be a little work. Okay, I think I'm on.
You got it?
So anyway, good morning Chairman, members of the Commission, EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. So while it's been a quiet march for the Commissioners, it has been everything but that for county staff. Right now, applications being submitted to the county are probably at levels that we haven't seen for 10 years. So right now, we're trying to juggle staff and staff up for what's coming in right now. You know, our focus right now is we have a lot of big projects coming in at one time and so trying to get those all lined up, get them commission-ready and board-ready, so you have all the information to make decisions on. So that's kind of leads into our schedule for the upcoming Planning Commission meetings. Our next Planning Commission meeting is going to be in Auburn. It's on April 28th. On that agendas, right now, we have the Greyhawk III project. That's down in Granite Bay. That's a project that has 28 single-family residential units and 44 multifamily units. We also have a West Placer Stormwater Quality Design Manual that is coming forward. And then ESD is also bringing forward some design details and general specific changes to what they do in their shop. Then after the April meeting, then we have a few Tahoe meetings that potentially could all happen. Starting May 12th, that is to be at the resort at Squaw Creek up in Tahoe. The Tahoe Expedition Academy is on that agenda. That's a school that's proposed to be located in the Hopkins Ranch's subdivision. Chalet Road Town Homes, that's a project in Alpine Meadows. There's 18 half-plexes. We also have a modification to a parking variance up in Tahoe. And then an appeal, the American Headwaters Restoration Project, which is actually just a grading permit that's going to be coming forward to you on appeal. Just briefly mentioned before the meeting that we're also trying to arrange individual meetings to tour the, you know, the Squaw Valley site, which will be coming up at the second meeting in May, which is May 26th. So that would be in Tahoe right now. I think Kathy, we're tentatively booked for Grand Lebakan. So what that means for Squaw Valley, you know, there's a lot of things going to those big projects as far as, you know, finalizing the reports and the development agreements, the fiscal plans. And so if all the stars align, we will be up there on the 26th to hear that project. And then two weeks later, we also plan to go up to Tahoe and that would be for the Marner's Valley West Project. We didn't want to hear that together with Squaw Valley on the same day because those are both probably going to be full-day items. June 9th.
So we're going to have three meetings in a row at Tahoe?
It is three meetings in a row. So as the weeks go by here in, you know, we finish out April and into May, we're going to have a much better idea if that's really going to happen. It is kind of unprecedented to go up to Tahoe, you know, three times in a row, but it shows you-
Unprecedented, we're going up there when it looks like it's halfway decent weather.
I planned that according-
I was here for, I think, one meeting when you brought me up there and almost didn't get back from that snowstorm. You remember it.
I don't think that was me. I think that had to be Paul.
It was Paul. You're right. It wasn't your fault. That's right.
They thought seriously about leaving you up there.
That's, I'm still having dreams about that.
After a third trip up to Tahoe, you all may very well leave me up there. So anyway, so that's the schedule. I mean, things are extremely busy right now. That's all I can say. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure the packets you get are complete, concise, and have everything you need to consider the project. So with that, the Board of Supervisors, last meeting, they did approve that road name change in Sheridan that your Commission made a recommendation on. That was changing Windflower Place to Commercial Place. They also received a presentation on the Sunset Area Plan, including the Opportunities and Constraints Report and the Preliminary Land Use Plan. The Board also provided direction on the proposed inclusion of the Placer Ranch specific plan into the SIA process and also, which involved retention of consultants to complete planning and project-level environmental review documents for Placer Ranch. That would all be combined. With that preliminary direction, staff is going to be going back to the Board, I believe it's May 3rd, if I'm correct on my Board date, with specifics as far as the work plan and the cost and staffing needs to actually carry that forward.
So Placer Ranch is not going to be just handled just by itself. It's going to be part of the bigger picture.
The proposal now is to process the SIA plan update and the project, and Placer Ranch at the same time, but Placer Ranch would be at a project level instead of a program level. And so, you know, the Board will make a decision specifically what that means on May 3rd. So with that, what we want to do, we want to get back here and give you an update on the whole Sunset Industrial Area, Sunset Industrial Area Plan Update and Placer Ranch, so you're up to speed. So the question is, where do we, you know, where do we put that into the schedule? There's also a couple Auburn projects that we want to squeeze in here. So there may be a special meeting, I don't know, in the next two or three weeks. We're going to figure that out. So as soon as we get some sort of a plan, we'll let you know, just so you guys can schedule your calendars. Any more questions on schedule?
Yeah.
Yes?
You know, I hear about the, there's a zoning ordinance, I guess, that deals with marijuana that's being discussed. Is that going to come to the Planning Commission or is that going through the Ag Commission and direct these Supervisors?
It will come to the Planning Commission as an information item or workshop item. That was originally going to be last month. The CEO's office pulled that off the Planning Commission agenda because they're still going through their process, attending MACs. So that's on the list of things to come to you, but the timing is solely being directed by the CEO's office right now. But for the Commission's purposes, that will come to the Commission, you know, both as an information item and then probably later as an action item.
The presentation was made last night. I wasn't able to attend because I had another commitment, but to the West Placer MAC.
Correct.
So that was on their agenda. I don't know what the result of it was yet.
Yeah, my understanding is that, I guess they had a quorum in the beginning of the meeting, but by the time they got done with the item, they, one of the members had to leave, so there was not a quorum. So they weren't able to make a recommendation on the direction they were going. So, but good point. I'm glad you brought that up and as soon as I find out when we can get that on your agenda, we'll bring it here.
Okay. Another question is, I hear a lot of comments about the NID proposal on Centennial Dam. Is there going to be an opportunity for an informational presentation at the Commission or someplace in Placer County?
Well, as a county is not the lead on that project, we're a commenting agency. The county is preparing a letter and I believe the deadline is coming up here shortly. So the county will be preparing a letter in response to, that was the NOP that went out? The Notice of Preparation, beginning, you know, the beginning part of the EIR process. So we'll be providing a letter, I think, but most, you know, comments right now are being directed straight to NID. If that is something that the Commission wants to hear, if it's inappropriate from a Council standpoint, you know, maybe there's a possibility of inviting NID to present that as an information item.
Well, it might be a little sooner if they're just at the NOP level, but when they get into the, you know, the environmental documents, at that point in time, it seems like it'd be appropriate, at least informationally, for the Commission to hear it so that the public in Placer County can at least have the same information as the county has.
Okay, I will definitely look into that for you.
I would support that. Do you have any more questions, Richard?
Well, that's it for me.
Okay.
You mentioned that the workload has gone sort of straight up right now. Are you doing any outsourcing so that things are done timely until you can get staff up?
So yeah, so that's a good segue into what I'm going to talk about next, which is, you know, as my Planning Director report, I can provide you with, you know, our staffing update. And before I get into the needs and what we're actually doing in-house, I do want to mention some new developments. One of our planners, Lisa Carnahan, who you all know, who will be presenting today. She has just, she's going to move over to the Parks Division within Department of Public Works and Facilities. A huge loss for us. We obviously appreciate everything she's done with us, done for us, you know, almost, I think it's been almost 10 years now. So thank you to Lisa. You know, those are big shoes to fill. So we are definitely going to miss her, but I think the county as a whole, she's still going to be with the county and she's going to serve the county well. So we look forward to working with her, you know, in a cross department. So with that, that's one vacancy that we're going to have to fill right away. You know, not only does Lisa do, you know, just about everything in current planning, she's done advanced planning and she's also responsible for doing our air quality analysis on, you know, majority of our projects. So, you know, those are needs that, you know, we'll have to fill very soon. I already introduced you to Shawna Hosey, our new administrative support. She's obviously helped our team immensely since she's been here, just in a couple, two or three weeks. And then the other news is our Agency Director, Michael Johnson, announced his retirement last week to our management staff. His last date is going to be May 6th. So that's another set of big shoes that need to be filled. So right now, as in my position, my focus is the workload that we have right now. How do we get it done? How do we get replacement staff? And then how do we staff up beyond that? We did just put in a recruitment for a new Assistant Planner that just went out this week. But, you know, it comes down to bodies. And, you know, over the last two years that I've been in this position, you know, I've been rebuilding, planning from, you know, the low staff levels that we hit after the, you know, the Great Recession. So we brought in some incredibly smart people that are doing some awesome work here. And so we hope to continue to do the same as these opportunities, you know, come our way. So that's kind of where we are. Like I said, things are busy, but we're going to keep moving forward and hopefully we don't wear you guys out with all these Tahoe Commission meetings and special meetings that we may be doing. So that wraps up unless there's any more questions.
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. The public is invited to comment on any item that they may wish to that's not on the agenda today. We can't act on it as a Commission because it's not an agendized item. Is there anything that somebody wants to bring up that's not on the agenda? Okay, and we'll move on to the consent agenda and I believe there's nothing on the consent agenda. And the item is, the next item is the Willow Park subdivision. And Lisa, Lisa, before you get started, I'd like to ask our County Council, maybe to review, what decision are we going to be required or asked to make today? I think that would be helpful for us and for the audience to know too.
Right. Your decision today is whether or not to modify the conditional use permit. Currently, the conditional use permit prohibits gates at the entry. The request that was filed was to remove that condition in order to allow a gate. The Commission will be listening to the testimony, considering the testimony of the staff report, and determining whether or not findings can be made for an approval or whether the Commission determines that findings cannot be made, which means you would be denying the use permit. Those findings are located at the back of your staff report and include the requirement that you find that the installation of the gate is not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of people residing or working in the neighborhood, that the proposed gate is consistent with the character of the immediate area, and that the proposed modification is consistent with both the general plan and the zoning code.
Those are on page seven. Okay, thank you. Okay, Lisa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the last time in planning.
I was going to say, sorry, here's you're going to another department, but congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a good ride. Really has been. So before you today, the Willow Park subdivision gated entrance, location map. You can see it's west of 80, down in the Roseville area. Here's Vineyard. Come down Cook Riolo, PFE, and the subdivision's right here. The vesting tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit for this planned residential development was approved by the Board in 2001. At the time of approval, there was a condition, Condition of Approval 66, that specifically prohibited the gates. This residence is a, this subdivision is 76 lots, fully built out. They, the subdivision has private recreation facilities down here and open space that they maintain along with all of the roads, which are private. And the Homeowners Association has come forward with a request to gate the entrance. This is the main entrance here on PFE and Canopy Tree. And the, there is an existing emergency vehicle access gate here on Bull Rush and Cook Riolo that they would like to change to a wrought iron gate. I'm going to go back a little bit so you can look at this a little bit more in detail and you can see the homes and the juxtaposition to where the streets are. This is the old Dry Creek Elementary School. Let's see. Oh, along with the entrance gates, there would be pedestrian gates on either side here. They would be open dawn to dusk and locked during the evenings. There would also be a pedestrian gate down here at the EVA gate. They would have an automatic system, which again locks the gates and also they would be lighted for safety and security. The entrance and exit system would also be automated such that somebody coming into the subdivision, the proposal is that they would not have to wait for, say, visitors to come in. They would be able to bypass the visitors and on the way out, in case of an emergency, electrical failure, the gates would automatically remain in the open position.
Please repeat that.
I'm sorry?
Please repeat that first part about the gates.
The gates that they-
About how they automatically open and close.
Oh, in, for all gates, fire, one of fires requirements is that any automated gates, in the event of an electrical outage, that they automatically open and remain open.
The part before that.
The pedestrian gates?
Well, you were just mentioning something about them, so you don't have to wait.
Oh, yeah, the proposal is that at the entrance here, that they would have enough room to, there would be a little kiosk where somebody coming in, say, you know, a visitor, they would have to punch in and request entrance from somebody that lives there. Somebody else that already lives there would have a sticker or some other mechanism on their vehicle so that they could, wouldn't have to wait and queue up behind the visitors. They could just go around and go into the gate.
Say, Lisa?
Uh huh.
You referred to the school as old. Is it still functioning as a school?
No, it's, they're using it for other things. It's not being used as a grammar school right now.
Okay.
To my knowledge, they're more of a facility for meetings and other things related to the school.
Okay, thank you.
This was originally projected to come before you, February 25th, but it was continued to ensure that the Homeowners Association Board did in fact have the authority to bring this forward. And staff received correspondence from the HOA's attorney that they do indeed have the authority to bring this forward on behalf of the HOA members.
I want to stop that right now and ask Council, because I received a letter from another party saying that they didn't. Does County Council had a chance to look at the other letters concerning the 67%, etc.?
What County Council looked at and what the Department looked at is who had the authority to file this application. Applications are required to be filed by the property owner or the property owner's agent. When staff saw the dispute regarding the vote for installing the gate or not, staff questioned the HOA and did receive a letter, which is in your packet as an attachment, from the HOA's attorney, Bruce Inman, who appined that the HOA has ownership of the common areas, which includes the roadways and therefore has the legal authority to submit the application. Whether or not the HOA has the authority under the vote to construct this gate and levy the property owners, I don't know. And I'm not going to make an opinion on that because that's beyond what the county is looking at in terms of whether the use permit can be modified or not. I mean, that is the scope of our review. I'm, I did read Mr. Inman's legal conclusion and I have looked at those particular CCNRs with respect to whether in fact the HOA has ownership of the roads and I concur that they do. However, I am relying on Mr. Inman's legal authority, his legal opinion, which I have a right to do. He does represent the HOA.
This is a view of the existing EVA gate, which under this proposal would be replaced with a wrought iron gate and a pedestrian entrance here. This is a view of the existing entrance where the gate would come across here and there would be two pedestrian entrances on either side. This item did go to the MAC, the West Placer MAC, on March 9th. And after a lengthy debate on both sides and a lot of emotion, the MAC did decide to deny three to two based upon the divisive nature between the parties that were in favor and against and because of the cost associated with it. Until fairly recently, as you know, this Commission and the MACs for the Dry Creek West Placer area, were not in favor of gates out in that area. But in recent times, things have changed and there's been several gates that have been approved. Cabral Ranch and Morgan Creek, Morgan Greens, and American Vineyard.
Excuse me, were all of those gates approved prior to lots being sold?
No. Some were and some weren't. The Morgan Creek, Morgan Greens, those were, that is not fully built out, but almost all the way built out. And-
So it wasn't meant to be actually seen?
Yes, so they came in and changed their conditional use permit. The other ones, Cabral Ranch has not been built yet, so that was done by the developer, as was American Vineyard. I do have a, an additional conditional approval that you should have a copy of, but I'm going to read it into the record. This is from our Environmental Engineering Department and it's just a request to have perpetual access into the facility in order to maintain sewer, but I will read it into the record. Says, "The Willow Park Homeowners Association shall provide to Placer County Department of Public Works and Facilities, Environmental Engineering Division, EED, and assign a combination slash code as identified by the EED for utility staff to access through the proposed private vehicle entry gate. The required access code shall be implemented by the applicant and verified by the EED. Access shall be provided to the planning, Placer County Planning," eh, try it again. "Access shall be provided to the Placer County Department of Public Works and Facilities Utility Staff on a 24-hour basis for regular sewer maintenance and maintenance, emergency response. To obtain the Public Works and Facilities access code, call the EED at 530-889-6846. The combination slash code identified by the EED shall not be changed unless otherwise approved by the EED prior to the change occurring." So with that addition of a condition of, recommended condition of approval, the Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission find that this is, project is categorically exempt and approve the conditional use permit modification for the requested gates. And I can answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. Let me see, I think we've seen this before, but just wanted to make it clear what it really is all about. There's lots E, F, and G, which I believe are the roads. Apparently, there's an irrevocable offer of dedication, though apparently the roads now are being maintained as private roads.
Correct.
And so apparently, this has to be removed before anything can happen so it becomes actually, the county's interest in those roads is no longer there and it's a purely private road system that's maintained by the property owners privately.
Correct. I don't know if-
Did I interpret that right?
Yes.
Yes, where the details are in Condition 116.
Yeah, 116.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to, County Council, I have a question before we open up. Obviously, the MAC has a much broader view than we do when taking into consideration this proposed gate issue. And we're looking at, obviously, just a modification of the original conditions that were put on this project. And so as we look at this, we're just kind of looking to make sure that they have done what they need to do to bring this forward to us for our concern, to make, you know, the right decision on what's being presented to us. I guess, what I was just asking is to make sure that our view, what we're making the decision on is a fairly narrow view. Isn't that true versus the MAC?
Yes and no. You know, MACs are, of course, recommending bodies and they take into account what's presented in front of them. And I can't recall, though I've read it, what the basis was for the MAC to recommend denial. But that's brought to you for consideration. So the MAC's recommendation is something that you weigh within your decision in hearing all the testimony. Your decision is narrow in the sense that it's one request for modification of the conditional use permit to allow a gate. So from that sense, it's narrow. But I do believe from another sense, and that is the findings that I quoted before. In terms of the findings, you are to look at the totality of the evidence and the facts in front of you and to weigh those facts and evidence in making your decision as to whether or not you can find, you know, in the affirmative, to support staff's recommendation for approval of that modification, whether in fact you think the facts and the evidence support those findings. And those findings do include detrimental effects, consistency with the general plan, community plan. So in that sense, you have to step outside of just, do we allow gates or not, to look at the totality of what's presented in front of you for the basis of determining whether you can make those findings.
But the issues with the HOA that they're having related to whether the vote was appropriate or whether there's, you know, financial burdens are going to be posed on the residents. Are we to take that into consideration as we look at this?
From the standpoint of whether the vote was valid or not, no.
Can the-
I'm sorry, I was going to say, but you didn't answer the financial burden on the residents. Is that something we should take into consideration or not?
Well, I mean, if you feel that a financial burden falls under detriment to the neighborhood and the surrounding residences, which arguably could fall within that. I mean, detriment is a word that is somewhat broad as to what is detrimental. Remember though, that this is a land use decision. And land use decisions in terms of what falls under detriment is from the standpoint of the land use. So what you're looking at is a gate, we're installing a gate. What might be detrimental by that decision in terms of changing use permit? Well, traffic considerations, for example, aesthetic considerations. So you have to look at it from the standpoint of the land use and the request in front of you for a land use modification of an existing permit. So while financial issues may be there- So while financial issues may be there, how do those pertain to the land use? And I really, I mean, that is for the commission to weigh, so I can't give you the answer to that, but what I can tell you is you should be asking for relevant evidence, testimony and facts related to the land use and those findings that you need to walk through with your decision, one way or the other.
So the HOA issues, is not something that we should really be too concerned about at this point?
Well, what I'm saying is whether or not the vote to install the gate and levy the homeowners was valid or not is not something in front of this commission, nor was it something in front of staff when they moved this application forward. Again, what was in front of staff was, do we have a valid and legal property owner or agent bringing this forward for consideration? And with respect to that, the investigation was done, the analysis was done, and I've concluded, staff's concluded, that yes, we have a valid applicant who's brought it forward. Now, even if this commission was to say, decide, yes, we're going to modify the conditional use permit, I don't know whether the HOA will be able to get this gate constructed and levy the property owners. That's something the HOA is going to have to grapple with.
Right.
That's beyond what we're doing here.
Who can bring forth a request to change a condition of a conditional use permit including a gate? Is it the property management of the area of the different lots that are involved, or...
Our code and our applications require the property owner or the agent of the property owner. If I'm not mistaken, if it's an agent, we also require the property owner to consent. So on our application form, if it's an agent, there's another section that has the property owner signing. What we typically, what we tend to find is if it's an HOA, bringing it forward, we really do in due diligence have to go one step further because not all HOAs necessarily have property ownership over the area that they're coming forward with. So that extra step was taken here to see whether we had one, and in fact, the provision in the CCNRs allows the HOA to convey the common area property. That's an ownership right. If you can convey, it allows the HOA to file, for example, for lot line adjustments. That's an application.
With or without a vote?
I'm sorry?
Without a vote.
I didn't hear you.
Without a vote.
Without a vote. In their CCNRs, they're given that authority in the CCNR. So when those CCNRs were first put into place, that was authority given to that HOA. Does it say apply for a use permit or change a use permit? No, it does not, but it does indicate that the HOA has ownership of the common area sufficient to file a land use application, or in this case, a modification of an existing land use application.
I'm struggling a little bit with this definition of detrimental. Can we consider the fact that it was originally approved without the gate and that everybody bought into this subdivision under that assumption? Can this body consider that?
Yes.
Okay.
But the likelihood of getting 100% approval for any, something of this significance within the HOA is probably...
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we could consider that as part of our decision, though, that it was...
No, very much so. I think that the history of this, the fact that it wasn't approved originally with the gate is most certainly relevant to your deliberation.
Okay, thank you. I think that's enough of...
No questions?
One question of staff.
Couple, actually, for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, first, the staff recommends approving this, and I was curious as to what they based that on. Was there some increase in crime that we needed to keep people out, or the people speeding up and down the roads? What was the impetus for this? And second question, you mentioned several places that we had recently approved or in some time approved gated. Have you a list of the people or the number of gated requests that we denied?
So for the first part of your question, what we based it on, we look at the environmental portions of it. Is there going to be any detriment to traffic? Is there going to be any detriment to any emergency systems getting in there, out, any people getting in and out, those sorts of things? We look at consistency with the community plan, the general plan. We look at, were there other gates that have been approved for a similar situation?
Well, I'm getting the impression that you were investigating the request to see if it meets the standards to be brought to the board, but that's not the same necessarily as approving what they want, is that correct?
Well, why don't we hear from the applicant, and then we can kind of do a little bit more discussion.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call the applicant or the applicant's representative to the mic here and make the presentation, and... Your name for the record.
My name is Michelle Engel, and I am currently the president of the Willow Park HOA, and I'm also a resident. First, as president of the HOA, I have two things that I'm going to be discussing, first are the points that I wanted to make. First, to represent the will of the board of directors, we were voted in by the residents to represent them in matters that pertain to the HOA, and in doing so, I'm here as the applicant for the conditional use permit modification that is before you this morning. Secondly, to represent the voting majority of the homeowners who voted to, yes, to finance this project, all in accordance with the rules of our HOA. My comments to the president of the board are as follows. First, the board concurs with and supports staff in its recommendation relating to the SEQA analysis and the categorical exemption determined. Second, the board concurs with and supports staff in its determination that the conditional use permit amendment is consistent with the objectives, policies, general land uses and programs as specified in the Placer County General Plan and the Dry Creek-West Placer Community Plan. And third, the board concurs with and supports staff in its determination that the conditional use permit modification is consistent with the Placer County zoning ordinances and that the gates are consistent with the character of the immediately surrounding area of subdivisions that have similar gated entrances, and it will not be a detriment to the public health and safety of the community. It is a belief of many that voted for the gates, that the gates will enhance the health, general welfare and safety of our community. So the board of directors supports staff in its findings and recommendations to modify the conditional use permit, along with the attendant conditions of approval. Just to, before I move on to my comments as a resident, to comment on some of the things that were discussed right now. As far as cost goes, just to give you guys kind of an overview of that, when most of us here, original homeowners, first bought our homes, I bought my home, my husband and I bought our home back in 2007, and most of these people, original homeowners, bought them around that time, maybe within 2008. Our HOA dues were $159 a month, and they were that way for a while. They went down a little bit, and they went back up again. Right now, with the payment for the special assessment, they're at $170, so they're $11 more a month. In addition to that, the current board has reached out to homeowners and let them know that if paying that extra money, because right now, our dues were $133, now they're $170, so they're $37 more a month than they were like six months ago. So if you're having trouble paying that $37 more a month, let us know, and we will extend your payments out. So we've reached out to people to make it a little easier for them. The history of the gating project, when we first bought our home in 2007, we had asked if there was going to be a gate put in, because it looked like it was set up for a gate. At the time, Standard Pacific representatives told us that Standard Pacific was not going to be paying for the gate, but that there were a number of homeowners who had already purchased homes that were interested in a gate and that a committee was being formed. So we were under the impression that this was a possibility back then, which is why we bought our home, and other homeowners here can comment on that as well, that they were under the same impression. So the committee started, Standard Pacific helped out to provide some general guidance, but again, they stayed out of it financially, they didn't want to have to support it financially. So just to give you an idea that when a lot of us bought our homes, yes, we were under the impression that the gate was a possibility. My comments as a resident of the Willow Park subdivision and as a mother of a young child, I realize that the gates aren't going to provide me with the ultimate level of protection, but they will provide me with a certain level of safety, knowing that my family is a little safer at night, and we don't, in addition, it will also make it a little bit more difficult for would-be criminals to come into our neighborhood and do the things that they've been doing. Just a real quick recap of some of the stuff we've been experiencing, vandalism to our private parks, stolen personal property, stolen cars, inappropriate activities occurring at our park during the day and at night, dumping is occurring now, home invasions, et cetera. It's a long list of things. Currently, with the passing of Prop 47, we've seen a lot of lower-level criminals lingering around in our community. The sheriff's department has commented that they've seen a lot of meth users hanging out in the Dry Creek area, and I know Morgan Creek has been experiencing some recent crime relating to that, so we've been, you know, we're trying to get prepared for that. In addition, I recently spoke with Sharon, Shannon, excuse me, Shannon Schofield at the Placer County Sheriff's Department, she's our representative for our area. I called her to ask about with the recent passing of the Placer Vineyards Plan with the 14,000-plus homes, we were curious if they were going to be increasing the protection in the area. And the first thing that Shannon said to me when she found out where I live, she said, "Oh yeah, I know the Willow Creek subdivision, you guys have a great little community there." She's like, "It's just, it's a shame because you're so exposed, and you're right next to antelope, and you have no gates." And that was before I said I'm giving to Shannon about any gates. So the sheriff's department, they see it, they see that we're vulnerable, that we're next to an area that's high in crime. On the map there, you see the Cook-Riola Street, that goes all the way down into a neighborhood in antelope, so we're constantly getting people walking up through there and coming in and just pretty much doing what they want in our neighborhood. So we're pretty exposed right there. Oh, did you change? So as you guys know, the Dry Creek community area is booming, there's going to be a lot of homes that are going to be built within the next few years. In addition to the projects that you guys have recently approved, there's a few other projects that are pending that are right down the street from us. So we're going to see an increase in traffic, which, you know, speaks for itself, that's also an increase in the level of crime. So we are asking that you please approve our gate and give us the same level, extra level of protection that you've allowed other neighborhoods within our community to have. And in closing, I would like to ask that after the close of public comments, that I be given a final opportunity to provide some closing comments if warranted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask...
I have a question.
Go ahead, I'm sure, go ahead.
Yeah, this is probably going to seem like kind of minutia, but the EVA gate...
Yes.
You know, when I looked at that, there's two locks on it.
Yes.
Who has keys to those locks?
It's for the fire department, and the gate that would be, because we don't have access to it as residents.
So the residents don't have any access for that gate?
No, so it would be replaced with the exact same type of system, but with just a decorative gate that you can't jump over, and it would have, I think it's called a Knox lock system.
A Knox system?
Yeah, a Knox system, and that's what the requirements are from the fire department and the sheriff, that we have that system on there, so that...
So you'd have the ability then to, where you don't have the ability to evacuate the neighborhood without the fire department than you would when you, if you replaced the gate?
It's going to be the same as it is now, so our main exit without, if the fire department's not there, our main exit would be through the front. If the fire department's able to unlock those gates, then that would then be an emergency. It's going to be the exact same setup as it is now, it's just going to look prettier, and it'll be bigger.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense, does that make sense? Did I explain it right? Yeah. So it'll have, instead of a padlock, it'll have a more sophisticated lock system on it, so...
And so if the residents need to evacuate, they'll have the ability to do that?
Through the fire department, yes, and that's the way it's set up right now as well.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
No further questions for the applicant's representative. Before we get started here with more comments, I know it's going to be a little bit contentious or could be, because I've read all the material, it's, but I think your, the representative for the gate proposal made a good summary, so how many, how many people want to speak here today? Okay, we're going to have to limit everybody's comments to about three minutes then, but I'd like to ask that maybe the people that want to comment on, for the gate, to come up first, just because, keep it, and then we'll go to the other half, but I don't want you to repeat what this lady has just made a good presentation on, but if you have some new information on why you think the gate is important and why you want the gate, that will be appropriate, but we don't want to repeat stuff. Okay, who wants to speak first? Remember, and...
I'll need a minute to...
What?
I'll need a minute to plug in the timer.
Oh, okay. You don't think they're going to be self, self timed themselves, huh? Okay, sorry, Kathy, I didn't, I thought we already had it all ready to go. And maybe we can get a sign-up sheet there next to the podium, that way you can just sign in when you come up. I thought that was always hooked up, sorry.
Boy, you just have all those demands.
No.
Five to five, three minutes. You're locked. Back door, three minutes.
Unfortunately, I have to leave it now.
That's okay, we're not going to be here for five more. I got commitments too. Well, that's what I wanted, you made a good presentation.
Right. Yeah.
And we've already set the rules for, we can't get into the HOA with or without a vote, he's one of the prime priests.
Right.
Or even the cost of the mute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey.
Oh.
Staff.
That's a good point.
And she would.
Fire department, we don't...
Hey, I think we're about ready to go here. We have a sign-up sheet here, and...
Try to.
Yeah. Okay, who would like to be first, and I don't think we'll need the timer, because I'm sure everyone's going to respect the three-minute rule, right?
Yeah.
But just in case, just in case Kathy's got the timer going, huh Kathy? That's all right, I thought it was always hooked up there.
Okay, just so I don't touch on the condition, my name's Vicky.
Okay.
By the way, so I don't...
Can you speak into the microphone there, please?
Oh, sure.
There you go.
I have to lower it for my...
There you go, now everybody can hear you good.
Um, as far as detriment to income, from looking at from that aspect, I didn't really look at it because I have a four-year-old son, so the additional few dollars a month to our HOA is not that big of a deal for me, but also from the standpoint of lowering my homeowner's insurance, which the gate would do, it's kind of a wash after a few years, and as far as resale value goes, if I was considering to sell my home, I would actually double my money on the investment of the gate, so I just wanted to add those two things.
Sure, thank you.
So, not to repeat.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
way, the person can be up there talking while the last person was up signing in, so go ahead, and your name?
Good morning, my name is Barbara Moore, and my husband and I are new residents to this community, just having moved in this past month. Our home is on Canopy Tree Street, just after you're coming in to the subdivision, it just past where you see Latoral, just past that. Just in the few weeks that we've been there, one of the things that we've noticed is cars coming through at a very rapid speed, and my husband's noticed other people kind of walking in, that they just don't appear that they should be there, they're just walking in, kind of looking around. Now, my kids are grown, but I have my grandkids with me a lot, every week, okay? So when we bought this home, we were looking at this as a subdivision we've looked at for years, and we knew we wanted to get in there eventually. We've gotten in, when we purchased, it was in our escrow documents that there was going to be a gate, and that was something that gave me comfort and made me feel that I had a level of safety, because my grandchildren are five and younger, and knowing that there's a little private park I can take them... And knowing that there's a little private park I can take them to, I don't want to be down there one day and somebody come in drinking or some tweakers come in off of PFE. That's not what I want for my grandkids. We paid a lot of money for our home. We want to maintain it that way. And if it's five, ten, twenty dollars, that doesn't compare to the level of safety that you have for your children and your grandchildren. So when you were talking earlier and you talked about what the proposal was when the homes were being built, you have to consider the fact that you're not just talking about the residents that purchased back in two thousand seven, eight, and nine. You have to also look at the residents that are now coming in to this subdivision and what they may be expecting and what they're looking forward to in the future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners Melissa and Yanoma, resident on Bull Rush Street. And what I'd like to just ask today, and I won't go into much more, I think we'll get a lot covered in today's meeting. But this discussion is obviously can become very emotional and subjective very quickly. And I really just would like for you all to just really make an objective decision that really affords our neighborhood the same opportunity some of the other neighborhoods in our immediate vicinity have had the opportunity to explore with the gate. We are surrounded by a number of neighborhoods that are either gated and actually a lot of farm residents, individual residents that have gates up and fences around their property. So I, I don't want to become the target within our area because we're easy to access. And I know a gate won't stop anyone, but my peace of mind, I think, is worth more than knowing that someone's completely, you know, the extra that we're going to have to pay and knowing that someone has complete access to our, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sign, sign in, sign in? Remember, speak first and sign in after? There you go. Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Michael Wasco, and I actually live on Bull Rush as well. And the reason that I would like you to approve the gate is our family actually has been subject to a home invasion. Someone broke into our house, stole money and other things out of our house. And at the time, when the police came, they told us that he had confessed that down Latoral and on Bull Rush that the gentleman and his cohorts had been in almost every backyard and could describe most of the backyards in our area. Also, I've had, my wife and I have both had the windshields in our cars broken out and the contents of our car stolen as well. And we bought the houses when they were first built. At that time, I was part of the first gate committee. And I actually met with the county regarding this because for me, it was a safety issue. The other thing that I wanted to mention at the time we met with the county, my wife was also a fire captain at the time. We met with the fire department. And where you had mentioned about being stuck in the community if there was an emergency was one of the things we brought up to the fire department, that if there was fire at the very entrance of the gate and you could not pass, the gate can actually be set up so that the, there can be an override code to the back gate so the community can leave. Where currently, we don't have that access because it's locked and the only keys are for the fire department. Also, the police have told me, when they came and took our statements for the multiple crimes we've had, as well as the other crimes in the area, that because this is a walking path down Cook Riolo, that there are a number of people that come in there. I've found drunk people in our park, busted laptops, vandalism, which is disconcerting to me to take my child to the park to play and there's booze bottles laying on the ground, there's broken laptops and things on the basketball courts. And they don't feel safe. And the whole reason you want to call something your home in your community is to feel safe in it. And when you don't feel that, it gives you an upset feeling in your stomach. So that's why I ask that you approve this.
Okay, thank you. Sign in there. Anyone else? Gentleman I noticed in the front row has been waiting to speak there. You. He had his notes out the whole meeting.
I totally want to respect the three minutes thing and I wanted to make some-
Your name?
Yes, thank you. Garrett Hamilton.
Okay, Gary.
My wife and I are the original owners of our house up on Willow Bridge Court. It's, it's, it's the-
It's the first cul-de-sac here to the left there. We bought it in two thousand nine. We're raising three young kids. Our oldest is eleven. We're planning on being in this neighborhood for at least ten more years, maybe forever. I don't know. It's a, it's a beautiful neighborhood.
I wanted to just speak, make a comment about, as a board member, because I am one of the board members. When we were at the MAC, I was really, I took notice of Ms. Riolo's vote to deny the gate because she, and I think you'll see it in your notes about the MAC decision, she was really compelled by some arguments that were being made about the finance and the cost and how that might impact some of the individual homeowners. And she specifically said that she was afraid that the board was going to put liens on people and just come down and step on their necks if they couldn't afford this special assessment. And I just want to say, we were not given a chance essentially to respond to some of the comments that were made. This HOA board is going to engage any homeowner that has a true financial hardship with this special assessment. I know all three of us feel that way because we've talked about it and we have engaged the neighborhood. And we're not going to be putting liens on people's houses if they're coming to us and trying to work through a true financial hardship. You have our commitment on that. That's a, really a red herring from a standpoint of that. I also just wanted to speak, I know I have three minutes. There's a, is there any way to put up that larger view that shows the bottom of Willow Creek?
Thanks. About a month ago, five weeks ago, there's a house right up in here across this orchard from our neighborhood. About five o'clock in the morning, a burglar with a known criminal history forced his way into the garage of that house.
He went into the house, the homeowner who I have personally spoken to and interviewed, he's a, he's a peace officer. Was that three minutes already?
No, no.
Oh, thank you.
The yellow light, I'm sorry.
Got it, got it.
There you go. That red one comes on, you're done.
The crook forced his way into their home, went into his daughter's bedroom and was scared off as he came out of the shower. Extremely serious. The Sheriff's Department has put no information in the media about this. They know who the guy is and they're trying to find him. In two thousand and thirteen, we saw a serious uptick in unwelcome people in our neighborhood in crime. I caught a guy going into my mother-in-law's car at midnight, chased him out. He actually, I thought, running into my underwear, I thought he went out to PFE. He actually went down that front road back into Antelope. And he had just gotten a computer out of my neighbor Matt's mother-in-law's car. There are unwelcome people coming into our neighborhood on a daily basis. And I do think a gate, especially if we complement it with cameras, will be a significant deterrent to people just coming into the neighborhood. We had Supervisor Duran at a neighborhood meeting last, last week, and he talked about growth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Oops. Sign in. That's what, that's what they were trying to tell you there. Anyone else would like to speak? And then we'll probably cut this off and let the others-
Just going to keep it real short.
Sure.
So my name is Jim Wilcox. I'm a resident of the Willow Creek subdivision. I just happen to live right next door to Mike, Mike Wasco, who spoke a little earlier with regards to the overall crime and such. I specifically, my wife and I, we're retired. And, you know, safety from our standpoint is numero uno. We don't want to be a victim of crime. And our car has been broken into. As I say, we live right- We live right here in the gate, one of the gates is right here. So from our standpoint, we feel threatened. Now, in terms of cost and such, I think that, you know, you'll hear, you've heard Garrett Hamilton, you know, speak to that. I think that it's within the normal range of what you'd expect in a subdivision like ours. We certainly, as retirees, can afford it and are more than willing to pay for it. So on that note, thank you very much.
Uh, sign in, sign in, please? And then this will be the last person on this side. I guess the room's been segregated here, so.
My name is David Hankin. I lived in the Willow Park subdivision for eight years. And we've seen a lot of growth in those eight years, and I guess there's anticipated to be much more. So the neighborhood's changed, and I believe we should change with it and be given the same privilege as the other communities like ours to install gates in our community. Like you've heard earlier, I've also been a victim of crime. I've had a car broken into and my driveway. We also use the park a lot. We walk the dog in the evening. And a lot of times, there's cars parked right by the park entrance. And usually, if you're in our community, you walk to the park. There's not a whole lot of reasons to drive. So I take note of those cars because a lot of the times, they, they don't belong in our community. So if we had the gates, I think there'd be a lot less cars and I'd feel a lot, lot safer in that park, especially when I walk the dog. Usually after work, it gets pretty dark. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, go ahead, sign in, and then I'm going to ask, is there a representative of-
They got one on this side that wants to speak.
One more.
One, one more, two.
Two more then, on this side. They raised their hand, just the last two on this side. And go ahead and be quick, okay?
A little nervous. Good morning. My name is Beth Cook. I'm, my husband and I are original homeowners. We bought at the tail end of two thousand and six. We live along Duckweed Street on the backside here, so our backyard opens up to Cook Riolo. I can speak to the amount of foot traffic we get between, you know, as soon as the sun sets till as soon as the sun rises. We sometimes can't sleep with our bedroom windows open because of the amount of traffic coming in. And they're going straight in through the side gate down into our park. I know a gate is not a be all to end all, but I do believe that a gate on the backside with a pedestrian gate would be a deterrent to the shenanigans that are going on in our park. And I say that loosely because shenanigans, it's much more serious than that. In addition, when we moved in, there were only eighteen homes in this development, so we've watched it grow up over time. The majority of folks, in my opinion, were expecting to be able to put in a gate. We were, that was mentioned by the builder, that that would be a possibility. So when people say they want to move in because there wasn't a gate and they didn't see it, there are an equal amount of people that moved in thinking, oh, a gate is a poss, is a possibility here. So just, just consider that. And something totally unrelated is I was at the Western Placer MAC meeting last night, very interesting and very concerning.
Okay, thank you. Somebody came up and beat this gentleman. This lady was quick. The gentleman there, you're going to have to be quicker than that. Maybe, don't repeat what's been said, that way we can move on. But ma'am, your name?
Hi, my name is Renee Labriola, and I live on Willow Bridge Court. We are, my husband and I live in the very first court in the neighborhood. And what I wanted to explain today was that I feel like our court in, especially, is in a unique situation in that we are able to see all of the people that come into the neighborhood. The incredible amount of traffic that comes into our neighborhood for no apparent reason. They drive in, they drive around our court slowly, they look at homes, they just drive around the neighborhood. They often pull up and just park in our neighborhood for no apparent reason. We have two children, a nine-year-old and a five-year-old, and neither of my children are allowed to walk to the park alone. It's, it's honestly too scary. The speeding through the neighborhood, the people that rip into our neighborhood just to make U-turns. It, it's really scary. And I feel like as a nine-year-old, my daughter is responsible enough to walk to the park. But on the other hand, I know that it's not safe. And so we're proponents for the gate. In addition, I don't know that anyone's mentioned this, but our previous Board of Directors, the three people that were on the board were against putting a gate in. All three of those people were voted out of office or decided not to run again. There's a movement in the neighborhood for the gate. The majority of the people in this neighborhood want a gate, and it was passed by a large majority. And I hope that you understand that that huge majority really represents the will of the neighborhood and the movement that's going on here to really keep our neighborhood safer. Thank you.
Thank you. And this gentleman, as he comes up, I'd just like to mention, I live in the old part of Roseville off a main street and we're thinking about painting our house, so. I haven't gone in your subdivision and, and one of those people that just kind of come in and now, but I've gone to other subdivision and just getting, just getting the color, color, colors of the houses and stuff so bad. But I haven't come into yours, so I'm not one of those people.
I think the difference is other people have broken into our cars and you haven't, probably.
Yes, sir?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Gilbert Leal, and I've been living in the Willow Creek community since two thousand eight. For the last eight years, we've been talking about this gate issue. And finally, and finally, the people of the Willow Creek was given the opportunity to vote, and yes, votes succeeded. Today, all I'm asking to this commission is that the Willow Creek community should be given the opportunity, like the, our neighbors around us, to enhance our security, that we should, we can add another layer of security to our community. I know I'm living in the number one civilized country in the world, and I will accept either of your decisions because I know from the bottom of my heart, we have the best government money can buy.
Well, thank you so much. You've got to run for president. You may, shouldn't be too political, but I think you probably beat everybody that's running, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. Can, can I have someone on this over here that's maybe not for the gate so much, a representative to start us off, maybe?
Say that again?
A representative of-
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Is there anybody else that may want to speak? Possibly that's not in favor of the gate?
I volunteer.
You volunteer? If somebody volunteered you, you probably mean-
There goes the program.
Uh-oh. Your name for the record?
Thank you. I'm Dale Harrington. I was on the board for six years. I was president for one, two-year period. I've been actively involved with this gate controversy ever since. And as a board member and with my fellow board members, we studied it. We concluded that it was not worth the expense. It's a major expense, and those who are in favor of it are willing to pay for it, but they're also imposing it on those who do not want to pay for it, who do not consider it valuable. A little background, in two thousand thirteen, the present advocates, very well organized, circulated a petition. They promised they could build a gate, I'll take the word promise out. They said they could build a gate for between a thousand and thirteen hundred dollars per homeowner. But that the board could come up with money to offset some of that. The board has no money. The board has only the people's money. They said we could take reserve money. It's against the law to take reserve money. When they became the board, they suddenly realized they had to observe the law. So instead of taking reserve money, they permit me one graphic. Our dues in two thousand fifteen were a hundred and thirty-three dollars, ninety-one for operating, forty-two for reserves. They are now ninety-one for operating, ten for reserves, sixty-nine for the gate financing for two years. Thirty-two dollars a month from every homeowner has been diverted from the reserves to the gate fund. That's fifty-eight thousand dollars. At the end of the two years, the operating expenses will be higher. The reserves will be much higher because they will have to make up for that fifty-eight thousand dollars. Our dues are likely to be a hundred and seventy or a hundred and seventy-five, and that'll go on forever. So it's, I calculate a burden of about five hundred dollars per year per homeowner, ongoing.
I will, I will allow, well, first of all, the red light hasn't come on yet, but I'll allow you a little extra time since you're, you're the spokesperson.
I'm sorry, speak up. I'm old.
I said I'll allow you extra time since you're the first speaker for the, for the group-
Thank you.
That does not want the gate in, and then they can kind of-
Thank you.
Come on in afterwards.
One of the reasons we, as board members, we three, who are now no longer board members, did not support the gate was we could find no evidence that it was really effective without human involvement, without a guard on the gate or without a patrol. And that's well beyond the ability of our community to pay. One guard, twenty-four hours, would cost, would double our homeowner dues. So that's why we didn't support it, but we went through the process. Now, some will argue that we fought it. Well, maybe subtly we did. We were against it. We're human. We haven't seen anybody come up with a real reason to overturn the status quo. The people- The people who are reporting break-ins, if, I've never heard of a break-in happening in a locked car. They've all been opened. My gate was entered once, nothing was stolen. My gate was unlocked. I lock it now. Uh, I've never had a car broken into because I keep my cars in the garage. We don't see the compelling evidence that sixteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars per homeowner plus ongoing operating costs and reserves are justified. We represent, we were accused of being five dissidents. There are ten of us actively opposing. We're representing the twenty-four who voted against it, we're representing the ones who didn't vote who are against it. We don't see a reason to overturn the status quo. The MAC listened extensively for two sessions, they said no. We don't see the compelling reason to overturn the MAC. I hope the recommendation of planning was solely based on all the i's being dotted and the t's being crossed and that, that you can consider the effect on those of us for whom this is a, a real hardship. We can all write a check for sixteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars, I'm sure, but affordability, getting value for what you spend is what's on my mind. And I am retired and I have a relatively low income and a nice house. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Wait, wait, quiet, please.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, I have a question, 'cause a lot of the testimony so far has been referencing the park and walk-in and problems that are going on, uh, sounds like particularly from the antelope area down south. Do you have, uh, any observations there that you-
Yes, I live right near the park, I walk my dog in the park twice a day. We used to have a lot of invasions, mostly teenagers coming through the fence. As a board member, I directed our handyman to screw the boards down. Now, we don't have people coming through the fence. Occasionally, someone uses our park who shouldn't. That's unavoidable. The break-in in, uh, Morgan Creek where our home was entered, that's behind gar- guard gates with people.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a, I, just a real quick question.
Sure.
The blue line that's all the way around?
Yes.
Is that a wall or is it-
No.
-individual homeowners' fences? What is that?
No, our community is, is completely fenced in.
Okay, what kind of a fence is it?
Uh, it's mostly wrought iron and some woodboard and some concrete wall with wrought iron decorative on top. Uh, it's not, uh, impenetrable, but it's pretty good.
Okay.
And as far as, we had a series of, uh, backflow thefts for brass, but we haven't had one in four years. The, the, the criminal activity that people are claiming is, as far as I'm concerned, severely diminished. I have eight grandchildren, I don't think any of them are in any danger when they come to visit me. Thank you.
We have one more question.
Yes.
As, uh, for your example on the dues, uh, the, I would guess, and I'm asking you this, did the majority of the homeowners vote for what's currently being assessed to the homeowners for dues?
Thirty-three voted for, twenty-four voted against. So, the thirty-three will impose the sixteen hundred and fifty-eight dollar cost on the twenty-four.
It's gonna be difficult to get a hundred percent.
Well, sure. Yeah, but you know, if it were eighty or ninety percent or seventy-five percent, I don't think any of us-
Ooh.
It's just this thing.
Oh, just that's-
I don't think any of us would be protesting.
Okay, thank you. Any other question now? Okay, uh, someone would like to follow up and, uh, maybe you can, uh, at, be additive to the comments, uh, since he made a good presentation?
I'm John Selmer and I've been a resident and owner since two thousand and nine. And I wanna thank you for giving us the opportunity to show that our CCRs and the California law requirements have not been met for you to consider changing the conditional use permit. For the authority that the board is citing, their attorney said section three oh seven of our CCRs gives them the authority. Even the council is referencing that attorney's saying that section three oh seven gives attorney, gives the board the authority. Section three oh seven just gives them discretion over the common area, not to change the conditional use permit. There are five sections of our CCRs that deals with changing the conditional use permit. We all agree that the conditional use permit was a document used to create the project. Willow Creek wouldn't be there without that original conditional use permit that prohibited the gate. Okay? And our CCR specifically says in section two-two ni- in section two-two-nine, "Project documents shall mean basic documents used to create the project." So, right there, we have the definition of what's a project document. The conditional use permit was used to create the project. Second, our section thirteen oh eight B of the CCR says sixty-seven percent of the voting power must be obtained for a material change to the project documents, which includes the conditional use permit. The board didn't get sixty-seven percent. Third, our CCRs in section fifteen oh six says that your meeting here today is to consider approving the, uh, change in the conditional use permit. But since the board didn't get the authority to request that change, we shouldn't even be here today. You shouldn't even be considering it. Fourth, our CCRs in section eight oh five points to the California law and says that California law requires a greater number than the majority to approve changes in assessments. And again, our section thirteen oh eight BII says that sixty-seven percent approval is needed to change the assessments. They didn't get that. So, in conclusion, our board and its attorneys and the council and the planning staff have not shown that they have the authority to change our cease, our conditional use permit, so I ask, please don't approve it.
Okay, thank you. Would you sign in there?
Yeah.
Sign, could you sign, oh, you, any questions? Okay, could you sign in, could the next person that may wanna speak?
I'd like to respond, um-
Oh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
-for this gentleman's testimony.
Thanks for interrupting, 'cause I wasn't looking at it directly, I was looking over here.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, that's okay, no, that's fine, thank you.
You know, the gentleman's actually correct. The HOA cannot change the use permit. It's this body that can determine whether the use permit will be changed or not. And that is what is before this commission. Now, one thing I wanna point out that's, that's very common with CCNRs, um, the use permit runs with the land. It did create this project. Uh, the reason it comes back to the commission is because in order to change a permit that runs with the land, a land use permit, you have to go through the public hearing process, which is what we're doing today. It's not uncommon for CCNRs to have an extra layer of approvals or requirements before a change that the county hearing body has approved can actually be perfected. But that's on the HOA's side. Again, what's in front of this commission is, is there merit? Have you heard merit? Have you heard evidence and facts to support the request by the applicant to amend this CUP? And, yeah, not to delay the public hearing, but it's probably a good segue to mention to Commissioner Curry's, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name.
Curry.
To your question about detriment, um, found a case, I was wondering if I'll have the internet, found a case that, that dealt with detriment, more by example. And I'll tell you how, uh, this was a case with a subdivision that wanted to add a clubhouse. Part of the HOA said, no, this will be a detriment. The dust, the traffic will be detrimental to our community, to the children's health. That was an example of the type of detriment. It turned out the court didn't agree on the lower, uh, lower court didn't agree, the higher court didn't agree. That's just one example. So, when we're looking at detriment from the standpoint of what this commission is considering, and the staff report includes a discussion of various aspects of consistency with the community plan. Does the community plan allow gate? Certain community plans that you'll see don't allow gate or allow gate with certain other criteria, for example, Granite Bay. So, you look at your general plan, you look at your community plan. Then you look at the notion of putting up a gate. What land use detriments could occur from that gate and what are you hearing and what concerns you? And from that, you move on to whatever your, your decision on this matter might be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, someone will wanna speak? Thank you. Name for the record?
Hi, my name is Debbie Cancela and I live on, um, Riverbank Court. And I've been a homeowner, an original homeowner in, since, um, for seven years. And as a resident, I'm greatly concerned about the installation of a gate. And let me start by saying, if I'd wanted to live in a gated community, I would've bought in a gated community. When we moved in, we asked if there was going to be a gate and they told us no. And, um, I knew there wasn't going to be a gate because there was an exception submitted to the planning commission because you need thirty feet and we don't have thirty feet, we only have like twenty-eight, so they did do an exception, so if they were planning to do a gate, I think they would've planned that from the beginning. But our community has been divided over the gate issue for years. It is really sad to see how our community has been torn apart over this issue. The community had a vote and out of seventy-six homes, thirty-three voted yes. Um, I'm skipping some of this 'cause it's already been said. The HOA board received an attorney letter stating the vote was illegal vote. This letter cost a thousand dollars and was paid for out of the HOA funds. Several residents against the gate consulted with two lawyers who said, we were actually correct, that we do need sixty-seven percent. However, these were just consultations and we did not have the thousand dollars to, to have a letter written, although we did ask the board for a thousand dollars like they spent and they denied us that. They wouldn't give us the money to get a letter, our lawyer letter. The board called a special meeting this past Sunday where Supervisor Jack Duran was in attendance and, um, they wanted to make concessions for the people who were against the gate and the concession, concession was to leave the gate open during the day. And, um, we're really concerned about that. Why would we spend so much money only to leave the gate open during the day? Um, and remember, the pedestrian gates, um, on the side will be open during daylight hours. One of the reasons we moved into the community was its location, on the outskirts of Roseville in a camp, in a country setting and again, no gate. The planning package that was submitted to you states that the gate request for the subdivisions within the Dry Creek West Plaza Community Plan are not supported by the MAC or the Planning Commission. It states that within the past few years, three other residential subdivisions in the area have been approved for gated entries. One of these communities is Morgan Creek, Morgan Greens, where some of their homes are over a million dollars and they have a golf course and they have tournaments and host weddings. This community does not compare to our community. But this community was originally built with a gate. The recently added gate was just to complete that project. The other community that they talk about is, um, Cabral Ranch, and this community is only twelve homes and it hasn't even been constructed yet, but people moving into that community will know that there is a gate. The last one they mentioned is American Vineyard and that project was approved back in two thousand and eight, also with a gate from day one. So, people who moved into that community knew they were moving into a gated community. Um, thanks, real quick. Um, what the planning report does not mention are the two communities currently being built without gates. One community is being built right next door to us, backing up to my backyard, and there is no gate. The other community is right down the street and again, no gate. These were not mentioned in the planning commissioner, in the planning report. So, there are several residents that will not be able to afford the cost associated with a gate and now it's not only the gate that will be an expense. Now, there is talk that a gate, for a gate to be effective, we will have to add cameras and security systems. And one of the homes located right next to the gate, which is also, um, a board member's home, they're now asking for additional landscaping in the form of mature trees and, um, now we've been told that the front landscaping's going to be redone, not in conjunction with the gate, but it just happens to coincide at the same time. So, as we said earlier, the gate project testified in our community, which makes me personally really sad. I didn't wanna mention the things that I mentioned, but I think you need to get a glimpse of what's been going on. And so, remember, although the planning package is recommending a yes vote, the MAC committee voted no against the gate. Mr. Riley voted no due to the disruptiveness and cost of the project and the desire of the commu- community plan to have minimal gated communities. Carolyn Riola was seconded based on the cost and potential, um, cost on the homeowners. So, in conclusion, I beg your intercession on this matter, please do not approve a gate for this community. Thank you.
Any question? Question, we have a question for you.
Question for you. It seems like there's a lot of issue as, as far as the, uh, cost of the gate and how it's being assessed and allocated. And, uh, one of the things I think we're looking at is, uh, if, if the gate were, uh, approved and the homeowners association was able to convince everybody to actually pay and, and construct it, what kind of problems would that cause?
Well, for example, my neighbor next door is thinking she might have to sell because she can't afford it. It's a single-income family. Um, personally-
Quiet, come on, please.
This happens all the time. Um, the lady across the street from me already moved, um, she moved a few months ago and it was because, um, of the, and, and I don't wanna bring this stuff up, but people have actually moved because of things that have happened. And, and actually, there is one more person going to talk about the financial piece of that, so maybe she can answer that question better than I can.
Okay, well, I, I wanna get away from the finances and just see, you know, uh, if you got a gate there, what kind of problems does that cause for you? And maybe some of the other people that are speaking after you can answer that question.
And it's not that the gate would cause problems for me, I think, I don't see the advantages to a gate for the money that we have to pay for it. Um, like I said, there's a neighborhood moving in right next door that backs up to my backyard, there's no gate, there's one going down the street, there's no gate. Um, the, the crime that they talk about has been in unlocked cars. A gate's not going to prevent people from coming into our neighborhood. We have pedestrian gates on the side that are gonna be unlocked during the day, anyone can walk into our neighborhood. They're talking about leaving the gate open during the day, all day, people can just drive in. I don't wanna pay that money for a gate when I don't see the, um, advantage to it. We have friends that live in gated communities. For every homeowner, you hand that, um, gate code out to ten people, you give it to your landscaper, you give it to the pizza guy, you give it to your kids' friends, you know, it's, I, I don't see the security of it. Everybody has a gate code. Everybody can get in. I'm a realtor, um, when I show houses in gated communities, I give that to, to my client I'm gonna meet there. Um, I just pull up, it, it's easy to get into any gated community.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question.
I'd like to ask the chair that, uh, the first group was very respectful of the three minutes. I'd like the second group to also be very respectful of that.
I agree with, so, sometimes when we're asking questions, all the-
I understand, but she went way over the three minutes, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Karen Fraser. I live on the bottom side of Duckweed, at the very back of the community. Um, I just wanted to make some comments, uh, according to what other comments were made. And one of the first things that Lisa had mentioned is that there will be a area for residents to be able to go around visitors, so the gate's gonna go open and guess what, your visitor can immediately follow in. What's gonna prevent that? Um, seventy-six homes were purchased in this community and we all agreed to the CCNRs that were there. I was also one of those that were told that there would not be a gate at this community, that's why I purchased. So, again, just as many, it's gonna depend on who your realtor, I guess, is. Um, there's a lot of talk about speeding in the neighborhood and I'm telling you, again, I live in the back of Duckweed, they are my neighbors. The speeders that are going through Down Canopy are my neighbors. They're the landscapers that the people hire. They are the, our postal worker, I've had to stop and ask her to please slow down during the neighborhood. Um, within the packet, there was a letter by Michelle dated February two thousand and sixteen stating that the twenty-four members that voted against the gate were for financial reasons only and the board has addressed the issues by creating pa- these payment options. That's very subjective, she doesn't know all of the people that voted against it and, I mean, it's, it's not the only reason why we voted against it. There was also a letter by Matt, um, Labriola dated March tenth, two thousand and sixteen, which is incredibly arrogant, asserting that the increase in our assessments was not going to break anyone's bank. It's just insensitive and rude. Every family is different and has varying incomes in this neighborhood, even in this neighborhood. My household is a single-income household, my husband's a UPS driver, not a doctor or a lawyer. We live on a tight budget and I make sacrifices so that I can stay home and school our children. There are other homes in our community that are also on- There are other homes in our community that are also on this fixed budget, either being retired. I've also taken my mother in to help provide care. Seventeen hundred dollars is not small change. It's an investment that I do not find a value in. And it's going to put us in debt, no, but it definitely affects how we make our choices and our purchases and particularly for my child's education. The issue of crime is a hot topic. You'd think that we lived in the Bronx. It's been so over exaggerated. There may have been a letter submitted by Selena regarding an incident in the park where she was, I guess, threatened. She was said that she was threatened. I'm not going to deny her fear or anything like that, that she may have been afraid in that situation. But one, this is one incident that's occurred in eight years that I've lived there. And I do not think that warrants a call for a gate, nor does it show a sudden rise in crime in our community. And for me personally, being on the opposing side, I have been yelled and screamed at by several of my own neighbors and my residents. I have publicly been called out of being stupid, of being ignorant, and that I want to do harm to children in my neighborhood. I'm a mother of three. And when trying to, okay. Can I just conclude? When we're talking about feeling safe in my own neighborhood, there are times that I don't feel safe, but it's not from the strangers that are coming through. It's from the own people that are on our board and other people within our neighborhood. I no longer walk through my neighborhood, I go outside my neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I think we have, we have.
Yeah, we've read this already.
Yeah, we have a copy in front of us here.
Mainly, I just want to point out on the attachment I put on page two. I know some people have mentioned that they moved in with the impression that the community was going to be gated. If you can, if you can look at the second, at the attachment on the second page. I also checked when I bought the home if the gate community was going to be gated. And it was proven to me that it wasn't going to be gated. So I don't know where the impression came. I don't know why it wants to be changed. Hope you've read the letter and you're taking things in consideration. I don't want to take too much of your time. Thank you very much.
Sign in. Anyone else at this time?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could you have the gentleman state his name for the record?
Yes, your name for the record.
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Oh, my name. Paulo Cancilla, I live on Riverbank Court, thirty-two hundred Riverbank Court.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there anyone else? If not, then we'll close up, public testimony. Oh, one more. Sorry, didn't see your hand come up.
Hi, my name's James Brandon. I live on Water Lily Court. And I used to live in a gated community and had some friends that have gated community. I didn't find anything safer in a gated community. And also, it's easy to get in because you just get behind a car and just drive right in. So I don't see any security in it whatsoever, but it's an added expense. I think it's more, it looks nice, but other than that, that's about it.
Thank you. Could you sign in there too? Okay, thank you. This time. Yeah. Yeah, the president of the HOA would like to just make a few comments, no comments? Yeah, just real quick. I think we've heard most of the testimony already, so.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said that are probably maybe misinterpreted. But the crime that happened in Morgan Creek, they're not fully gated. They still have people that can walk through in there. So it wasn't an issue of a gate not working. That was mentioned earlier. The attorney letter, we had actually two attorney letters done. When the vote for this gate project was done last year, we were not on the board. We were just, you know, residents. The prior board was the one that facilitated that vote. At the time, they presented it in a way where it was going to be our regular assessment of a hundred and thirty-three dollars plus one hundred and seventy dollars a month to pay for the gate. That's how they set it up. So in my letter that Karen had mentioned where I said that the twenty-four people voted because they couldn't afford it, that's not true. I had mentioned that there were a number of those twenty-four people who had to vote no because they could not afford the additional one hundred and seventy dollars. The way that, when we took over, the way that we rearranged it was so that it would be a little more affordable. So instead of paying one thirty-three plus one seventy, you're paying just one seventy. And Barry, who works in finance, worked, he's right there, he's our other board member. He actually worked for an extensive amount of time with Bob Browning, who was our reserve representative. And they came up with a plan to make sure that the reserve funds would not be hurt and that we would be able to keep the dues within an affordable range. Affordable for most of us is what we accepted when we signed the documents when we bought our home, which was about almost a hundred and sixty dollars. And now we're paying one seventy. When you sign those documents, you're agreeing that you understand that your dues can go up and go down. There's going to be changes in the environment that you can vote on. If the vote passes and you don't like it, that's just kind of what happens when you're living in an HOA. You just have to learn how to deal with it. Unfortunately, some people that don't want to pay, that are claiming a hardship, it's just because they don't want to pay for the gate because they don't want a gate. These are the same people that go to Europe and go to Canada and buy brand new cars. So just keep an open mind with that.
Go ahead, just one more, one more comment.
The attorney letters, going back to that. We had the original attorney who did the vote with the prior board. We had him write an opinion on the challenge that was made by Mr. Selmer. He wrote his own separate opinion. He did not charge us for that because he was defending his work that he did. Then we had our new current attorney, Mr. Inman, write a separate opinion. Their both opinions were concurrent. They agreed with each other. They were the same. So we felt that two legal opinions was sufficient enough. That's why we denied having another one done. It's just too much money to spend.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes.
Okay, I think I heard the possibility at least, or maybe in your last board meeting, that there was a concession to leave the gate open during the day.
Well, what the, the point of that meeting was, was we had, you know, Supervisor Duran attended. And the point of the meeting was, he had suggested, why don't we get together as a community, even though we've done this a million times, and talk about what are some of the compromises for these people that are just, don't want the gate? Is there anything that we can do to make it easier for you? You know, financially, anything? And someone had suggested, what if we left the gates open during the day? Would that make you feel better? Would you prefer that? But the people that were there in attendance that didn't, that don't want the gate said, literally said, no compromise. No compromising at all. So that was just brought up as like kind of a suggestion, as something that we could do. And Supervisor Duran had explained that if and when the, it gets approved, when we submit for the permit, if we decided as a community, if we do a vote as a community and we decide, yeah, let's go ahead and leave the gates open, then we would submit that on the permit at that point, the building permit for it. But it was literally just a suggestion that was discussed, to see if anyone would be interested in that and they said no.
Well, was your board amenable to that proposal?
I'm sorry?
Was your board amenable to that proposal?
We were, we were open to anything, really. Yeah, we were, we threw it out there to see if those who were opposed would maybe change their mind and say, well, yeah, okay, sure. If we could keep them open during the day, then yeah, let's do that. But they said no.
And, okay, so it's unanswered right now?
Yeah. Yeah. And Supervisor Duran said we can discuss it at a later date if we want, leaving the gates open. It could be discussed at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me see, your conditional use permit that you're asking for requires that you leave the pedestrian gates open during the day.
Correct, yes. They have to, they'll be closed, but they'll be unlocked. And there's a locking mechanism, so when the sun goes down, they'll lock.
Right. And so that's a requirement of your current?
Correct. Yes.
And so as far as the driving gate?
The vehicular gate, yes.
That's an unanswered question, that's not, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands right now, they'll just be closed, you know, but if, if.
That's what you're telling people, it'll be closed.
Yeah, I mean, because when the vote was done, that's kind of how, we didn't put any language in there that we would be suggesting that they be left open.
So that option really isn't available to the residents in the future?
That's no, no, according to Supervisor Duran.
No, according to your board.
So if I can, if I can jump in and just clarify, what's being proposed right now is to have vehicle gates that are closed all the time and pedestrian gates that are open during daylight hours.
Okay.
So that's how the project is proposed and conditioned.
Yeah, and so that would be what we're looking at today.
Yes.
I think we've got enough, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I think, no, no.
That's not very clear.
No, no, we're, I think we're done here. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to bring it back to what our county councils.
You're going to close this session?
I closed, I closed. Before we started and why we asked extensive questions of staff is that we're here to discuss merits from a planning standpoint. And first of all, I think we heard early on that it doesn't matter if you took a vote or didn't take a vote. The HOA, according to county council's interpretation, is that they have an authority over the common area. At least, that's my interpretation of what I heard. Vote or no vote, so that's, that's kind of almost not an issue. And also, if there's any assessments, it's an, to be assessed, it's an HOA issue. Now, if you need sixty-seven percent, you need thirty-three percent, whatever it is, it's an HOA issue to assess the residents. So, and so we can't discuss or even rule on assessments or anything else.
If I could just clarify, the only thing that county council looked at, and it was on the, on the request of the planning department, was, was there a valid application made?
Right.
Was the owner or the authorized agent of the owner the applicant for this application? That is the only thing that our office looked at. We would not opine on the merits of the CCNRs other than to verify and review what Mr. Inman provided in his letter as the citations of the CCNRs to provide to the satisfaction of the county that we had a valid application to move forward with.
And that would, irregardless of a vote or no vote, it just, as an HOA, do they have that authority? And we determine, or the staff is determined that they do in fact have that authority to bring this application forward. Okay, thank you. Okay, what's, any questions of staff?
Just the one, any rulings on gated communities in either the community plan or the general plan that might be applicable?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't quite hear you.
Any provisions in the general plan or community plan that might be applicable in gated communities?
The Dry Creek West Placer, while it doesn't specifically state no gates, it does state that they want a, an open pedestrian and vehicular. Well, I don't know about vehicular, I'd have to look at that again. But they, they request and require an open field, but it doesn't specifically state no gates.
So it encourages us, but doesn't prohibit?
Correct.
Any other questions of staff? If not, are they ready to vote on this? Or anybody wants to make comments, I guess, before?
Well, you know, this is just a side comment. I don't know how it exactly fits in the decision. But at any rate, the EVA gate situation that the community has now, I think, is substandard. If, if you're depending upon the fire department to remember to bring a key to open that gate up if you need it, I think that, and so hopefully, your fire department is taking a look at that. And anything you do in the future is going to solve that problem so that people like Mr. Paulo, if he needs to get out that gate for physical reasons and the front road is blocked, that he's got the ability to get out. So I, you know, that's just a comment that maybe not pertained directly to this decision. But I think that was an observation I made that would be a problem for that neighborhood.
Okay. Any other comments? Lloyd Wayne?
Well, I was just going to say, let's go for the motion and see where it goes. Let's see, I'd like to make a motion that we support staff's recommendation based on the findings that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. Approve the conditional use permit to the Willow Park Condition Use Permit to allow for an electronic vehicle gate entry and lighting and two pedestrian gates at the entrance to the subdivision, as well as a modification of the existing emergency vehicle access gate and the addition of pedestrian gate at Cook Rielo, Bull Rush Street location. And then the new condition that we got today, condition one twenty-four, that, and do I have to read the whole thing?
I think it's already been read into the record.
Right, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And I think there, is there a, another, I think we've already said the CEQA. Is there anything else that I need to add to that, Karen?
Your motion should be subject to the recommended findings for both the CEQA exemption and for the conditional use permit as stated in the staff report.
So move.
Second.
Is there a question now or discussion?
Sure, yeah, right question.
Just, it seems to me that to some degree, the main impetus for the entire thing is a feeling of safety and security that the gates might provide versus the freedom and feeling of being able to transport through neighborhoods that are all a bunch of same as us. So I'm wondering, has any consideration been given to say, rather than putting in a gate, just put in a camera? Because if people's pictures are being taken, they're unlikely to be going through neighborhoods and driving with their license plates or their faces on camera. And yet you wouldn't have to put a gate up necessarily.
I appreciate the viewpoint, but that's not our consideration.
Well, I think it's all within our consideration because we're certainly making judgments on what's going to be, you know, in these people's lives.
Well, we're making a decision on what's in front of us today. We're not necessarily looking for alternatives to it. We've got to do an up or down vote on what's being presented to us today.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, alternatives are available to the homeowners association.
And I'm sure they've explored that and.
Well, all I'm saying is they are available, no matter how we vote today, they are available to the homeowners association.
If this is approved today, they're not forced to complete the gates. If they want to exercise the option of your camera idea, I think they're free to look into that and not build the gates.
And whole assessment issue is beyond our control.
Absolutely, that's an HOA.
Either way, either way, approved or not approved, they still have other options they can look at.
Absolutely.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Akuri?
No.
Mr. Setisens absent, Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes, we have a tie vote, so.
Tie vote is a denial.
What? A tie vote is, that's a denial. Okay, so I guess. They're denied and there's an appeal process, they're time to, ten calendar days and the appeal process, if I can read it, is five hundred and fifty-two dollars. So thank you for your participation and it looks like this isn't going away completely.
At least it's off our plate.
We'll wait, we'll just wait a few minutes here and then we'll maybe just take a two or three minute break and then back to our last item.
I don't even think we're going to have the last item.
Yeah, I know that. You know, my nephew.
You really, you really hate to see this.
I don't think it's gated, but if you got any. I'd like to call the meeting back to order if I can. Next item, I gotta find my agenda now, where is it? Oh, here it is. It's Extension of Time Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Conditional Use Permit on the Shelba Development.
This, the applicant put in a.
Please close that door, just, just close the door, that, that way they can do all they want out there, yell at each other, whatever. Sorry, I didn't say that.
Can you close? This is an application for a two-year extension of time for a previously approved vesting tentative subdivision map for the Eden Rock Two subdivision, which was approved in February tenth, two thousand nine by the Board of Supervisors. Six single-family residential lots and one open space lot. And the applicant is Sheba Development LLC. And just this morning, we had to discuss that the Subdivision Map Act actually only allows a one-year extension. And there's a conflict between the Subdivision Map Act, Chapter sixteen, and our zoning ordinance, Chapter seventeen, which is, allows up to three-year extension. So I talked to the applicant prior to this ten o'clock start, and he's okay with just the one-year extension of time request. So what we would do is amend our recommendation, and in the staff report, do a modification and just say for today's sake, that this is a one-year extension of time, and we'd also modify Condition Number One and Condition Number Seventy-Six. So the new expiry date, if the planning commission does approve this one-year extension, would then be to February tenth, twenty seventeen, because the expiry date was was February tenth, twenty sixteen. And we did receive on this application.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, maybe I just need to catch up here, I'm sorry. But but what's the reason for a one or a two-year?
When the economy took a downturn in two thousand eight, the legislature decided, started providing automatic extensions of maps. It was designed for the obvious reason that with the downturn, people weren't going to have the wherewithal to record maps that, that had been approved on a, the tentative maps had been approved. The legislature did that in oh-eight, oh-nine, twenty-eleven, twenty-thirteen. What we're seeing now, because the, the latest one that they enacted in twenty fifteen is only extensions for maps in disadvantaged communities. Placer County, thank goodness, is not one of them, there's only eleven in the state. So it appears, at least as of this year, the legislature is done with the automatic extensions. And by automatic, I mean, the legislator, the legislature enacted it, and they automatically were extended. Most were for two years, the first one was for one year. So these maps that qualified were gaining these automatic extensions. What also happened by the legislature in two thousand eight is they amended the provision in the government code that dealt with regular extensions of a map. The state code provides for extensions, so set aside the automatic, that was more for the history, because you're gonna see more of these maps, so I wanted to make sure you understood the history of gee, why are we seeing all these old maps? That's why. In two thousand eight, the legislature also amended Government Code six-six-four-five-two-point-six, and for the tentative maps, that would be subsection E. And what they did in oh-eight is they took the maximum period of time that a map could be extended from five years to six years. Our county code didn't pick up on that. The second thing that is different from our county code versus state law is in state law, the extension is addressed that the map may be extended for a period or periods, not to exceed, and now it's six years. What our county code states is, the map may be extended for a maximum period of one year, but then provides for two more extensions for a maximum of one year apiece. Based on our police power, the county can enact laws, county codes, that are more restrictive of state law, provided they're not preempted from doing so. Under the Map Act, we're allowed to, and we did sometime back, before I was with the county, enacted, the board enacted the code to state a maximum of one year per extension. So what we found out, and I do apologize to the applicant, what we found out, and, and to the commission, that the two-year extension at this point, the request is, is not authorized by county code. And the commission cannot act contrary to county code. So what we're forced with now because of this disparity is the maximum that could be granted to this application at this point in time is one year. I can tell the commission that there is discussion with staff about bringing our county code up to state law, but that, of course, takes a little more time. I, I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So, so at any rate, they would potentially, based on this action, get a one-year extension, but they can come back two more times?
I won't ask to know the math of how many times they can come back, but as current county code is written, they can request and they could be granted a one-year extension today. And if Roy tells me they've got two more years available, then they could come back next year. If county code wasn't changed, they can come back next year and request another one-year extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, with, also with the applicant, when I discussed this this morning, I think there's a good possibility that this one additional year would get them to be able to record the final map, and they would be complete on that. The due diligence right now is they've been currently in the improvement plan process, so they've been working towards completion, and there's also an issue in here that's mentioned about a drainage, some drainage issues, that if we want more specifics, Rebecca Tabor could address from engineering and surveying. And also in the, after it was noticed, we did have one public comment letter that was received from the Eden Rock Homeowners Association President, and he wanted additional information on what this was concerning. And since that letter was sent and it's attached to the staff report, the HOA president has met with the applicant previously and, and discussed everything that was going on to his satisfaction. So what we're doing is recommending a modification to this, that it would be a one-year extension of time, and then modify also Conditions One and Seventy-Six that state that end date. And the end date would change to February tenth, twenty seventeen. Less, actually less than twelve months because of the, original was February tenth, twenty sixteen.
Hey, thank you, Roy. Any questions of Roy? Not as the applicant or the representative for the applicant would like to speak, or agree with staff, or disagree with staff? I would hope you wouldn't disagree with staff.
Rick Probst, no, I don't disagree with staff. I'm Richard Probst, I'm the applicant with Sheba Development. We became the owners of the property. I, I don't remember if it was late February or March, and then we got the engineer back working on it shortly after that, and we've been proceeding diligently. And we think that we have a good chance of having a map approved within this time so that we could post whatever bonds we need and then get the map recorded.
Let me see, the, the document alluded to some additional engineering or changes that you're looking at?
Well, that was for the drainage, and I, I'm not an expert on that, I believe Rebecca Tabor could answer that better. But what the engineer told me was that it'll slow us down a bit, but it's not like, he said it's like a blip other than the fact that it's slowing us down to get it done.
The analysis is slowing you down?
Yeah, it's pretty expensive, it was, it's total is about thirty thousand dollars for the study.
Okay. And so, yeah, maybe Rebecca can, I don't think it changes the condition use permit any, but.
Right, the, should I get that? For the record, Rebecca Tabor, engineering and surveying, the, the lot layout is the same. The project has been in the improvement plan review process for, I can't, I'll try and speak up, sorry. The project view, I'm sorry, improvement plan process for a few years. But the comments we made are really protective of existing structures and adjacent properties. We, these are technical comments on the design, really. The project has a couple of detention basins that are sort of embankment structures, there's steep topography, so a couple of areas, almost like a dam, are being constructed to retain or detain some water. So our comments were to have a geotech engineer certify that these are constructed properly, so there wouldn't be a release that may wash out and affect a, a home, existing home, or damage somebody's property. So we had made these comments to the, the drainage, or to the engineer, TSD Engineering, about a year ago. And with their, that was the second submittal, with the third submittal, they didn't address these comments. So the comments remained, and the engineer realized they needed to hire like a sub consultant to address these particular comments. They're just a little different than the normal routine design, and they didn't have the in-house staff, it appears. So they're, they're having to do like an addendum to the existing drainage study. It's not a whole new drainage study, it's a, a little bit of additional analysis to be protective of the adjacent properties.
Okay, and that's, that's the basis for the extension that we're looking at? Is that work?
There could be other reasons, but I believe that was cited as.
A, a prime one.
That was the main one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, if not, I'll open up to the public, anyone in the public would like to speak, just come here and give your name to the record. Hope this gentleman on the, no, you'll go. Don't fight over it.
My name is Demetrius Sanchez, I lived in Eden Oak. My main concern is asking you, as sort of overseers of both parties at stake here, to in essence protect our investments, our intentions on this. My concern in granting an extension is that it's going to negatively impact us. A little bit of history, real quickly. Our home basically has lost almost forty percent of its value. And the neighboring homes have not been successful at selling as rapidly as one would expect. And I'm just going to conclude that is the basic supply and demand in the situation. Right now, it will, by extending this, is probably going to aggravate that. I anticipate that our homes are going to be taking significantly longer time if construction activity and other detrimental impacts would face ours, our subdivision. I think we all took a risk when we invested on, on our properties. The history of this property equally has some shortfalls, an investment outcomes, ours obviously is one that we cannot change. I cannot go and ask what I paid for my house. It'll be significant in time. We're talking, like in my particular case, one-point-six, eleven years ago to presently now, I can only get maybe about one, one-point-one. So I asked the extension be denied.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Garabedian of Friends of the North Fork. The, the negative declaration is, was not attached to the report, and I, I couldn't find it online at Environmental Services. And the staff report indicates there is a required of the new drainage study. They've been informed of this, that there are significant design change and recalculation. And the, a question I have is, were, were they informed in writing? Was there a written statement or to them?
Who was informed? Who was informed? You said, were they informed? Who, informed who?
I am talking about what was just said by Ms. Tabor, that they, that somebody, the developer, I guess, was informed of the need to make these, the additional drainage report.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
After a project's entitled, it moves into the improvement plan review process, and that's handled by the engineering and surveying division, that's really where we look at the nuts and bolts, the details. We look at the plans so they can be approved and move on to construction. So in the back and forth, we, we take the project plans from the private engineer and, and we review the public improvements and make certain comments to, to get them to engineering standards. We made the comment back to the engineer, the applicant's engineer, that some additional analysis should be made on some of these detention ponds. And that was, that was the process for relaying those comments.
Okay.
Is that a written comment?
Yes.
Well, to be able to look at this, we would certainly like to be able to look at the, the negative declaration and also the written comments, which are not in here. So we think that's the kind of information we as the public should have, and that, that you as a planning commission should have for your decision, and that would be our suggestion to you, that you be sure to have that information. And that would be our suggestion to you, that you be sure to have that information.
So, so if I could address Mr. Garabedian's comment, he is correct. You know, this, this extension of time does rely on the original environmental document that was adopted for the project. That mitigated negative declaration is not attached to the staff report. That, that was oversight, and so what I would recommend the commission do is, without that being attached, continue this to the April twenty-eighth planning commission hearing, to consider it at that, at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
No questions?
Mr. Garabedian, question? Other than the process where you don't have the written comment, is there another objection you might have to the extension?
Well, the question is, what is the environmental impact here? You know, apparently, staff believes it doesn't require a modification of the negative declaration, and it requires a drainage report, so.
So if the report says nothing, I'm just saying, do you have another objection to the extension?
No, other than.
I think the issue, the only issue I know of is the drainage. It's close to Folsom Reservoir. It looks like it's very close, so it's hard to tell what the, the drainage problem is without looking at the written comment and the negative declaration. We just don't have the information, so.
Well, right, I understand that.
Sorry?
I say, I understand that.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if, regardless of that information, if there was another problem that we might be not aware of?
Well, not that I know of. The negative declaration might disclose, might disclose something, but, but we agree with staff, because it, it would be good for us to have that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? If not, we'll close this one. And I guess staff has recommended that we continue this to the April twenty-eighth meeting.
That's correct. We need date, time, certain or no.
Yeah, because we're also going to renotice on this one.
Yeah, well, it's, will the twenty-eighth, you still have time to do that between now and then?
That will occur right after this meeting, and just in time.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, there's been a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we continue with, to the.
And a second.
Twenty-eighth meeting.
Twenty-eighth, that's the roll call.
Mr. Akkuri?
Yes.
Mr. Setterson's absent, Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader? He's absent, Mr. Ricucci?
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, I think that concludes the last item here, is, says consent items agenda, but we had no, no consent items, so I guess unless anyone else wants to speak, the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you. Whoa, don't forget to take all your, your, your EIR stuff either, since Kathy was so gracious to bring it to us.
I, I heard.